Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Here.
Mr. Scapora?
Here.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Here.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
All present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 9th meeting and the November 30th special meeting?
Julie, oh, you didn't pick up your stuff, Ellen.
I'm sorry.
Just make a motion.
I make a motion that the minutes were canceled.
And be available to remain on the secretary's desk.
Be available to remain on the secretary's desk.
For approval for everyone.
For approval for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Beazey. May I have a second? Any questions or discussions? Geez, I've been here too long. I'm memorized. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the fiscal department reports and the paid bills for the month of November 2015? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
One last time, Ms. Buck. Anything that we're approving outside?
We need a drum roll here.
No, there isn't.
Thank you.
Who's taking over for Mike next one? Next, Mike's question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we'll have our citizens' requests with, that relate to the agenda items only, please. Again, we'll have some time at the end of the meeting for an open forum. Anyone that would like to speak about the agenda items, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to limit your comments to three to five minutes, please. Going once, going twice, okay. Moving on. Any committee reports? Mike, Malcolm, Finance?
The budget has been worked and reworked, and I believe we're gonna vote on it tonight. And I see no reason why any holdups. It is a balanced budget. As with a couple different capital fund projects, but it is a balanced budget, and no increase in taxes.
Thank you, Mike. Public Safety Committee, Julie, Jerry, anything? Personnel? Mike, Tricia? Well, we did have interviews for a city solicitor, and we had nine candidates. And we're gonna meet in executive session about this tonight afterwards, so that's pretty much it. Mr. Kelly is retiring at the end of January, so we need to find a replacement, not that he can be replaced.
Very kind, thank you.
Board and Authority reports, I don't think we have anyone here. Jared, anything from you?
Hello, not yet.
Okay. Department reports, Joe's not here.
He's out bowling.
He's out bowling? With his broken thumb? Chief Plummer?
First of all, I'd like to thank council for renewing my contract for the next three years. I really appreciate that, your support and your confidence in me to do that. Second of all, I would like to thank and commend everyone who has been participating and working on the holiday projects that we've had around town, starting with the turkey trot all the way through the Christmas celebrations. Everybody's done such a wonderful job, worked very, very hard. Things turned out really nice. I've been getting a lot of compliments. I would like to thank the other public safety departments, the fire department, mutual aid, and of course, the street department for all their help. It's been a huge success. Thank you.
Chief Plummer, we're lucky to have you. Thanks for sticking around for a couple more years. Chief Brazili?
Just a few things, just to reiterate what Chief Plummer said. A lot of good comments on the holiday celebration that we had and the parade and all that went along with that. And just everything went well, and should send a special thanks out to Beth Straka. I don't know if she's here tonight. She worked her tail off putting a lot of this stuff together. I took care of the parade, and there was kind of a panic mode there for a little bit. We had a call right before, and she's calling me on the phone, "Where am I?" And I said, "Don't worry, we'll be there." But things went really well, and I think after, after everything, and the bonfire in the evening, she kinda got into a relaxed mode and settled down a little bit. I think she should be commended for a fantastic job and all the effort and time she put forth. One thing I will say is I hope more people get involved. Next year, we sure can use the help, and all help will be welcome. So we'll be looking to plan this thing again next year and keep it going. So, with that, thanks.
I was gonna mention it in my mayor's report at the end, but I wanted to also commend that and everybody else, and you, John, and the chief, and Public Works, and everybody that worked on it. I think for year one, it was fantastic, and I think we should form a committee to work on it next year so it doesn't overburden any one particular person. But yeah, it was a great job by Beth and all you guys. The community was really appreciative. Same thing with the business owner of ANTHA on the Thursday before. Maybe we need to try to put those things together somehow, so. Great job, everybody. Thanks, chief. Anything else? Anne?
Hi, I'm a reporter.
I have a question, though. I took a ride down around Legion Keener Park. What are we doing with that mess down there?
It was on a ten-day notice already from last week when I went down, so.
And what's the next step?
See, he cleans it up.
And then what?
Then he ice-ice him.
Fine?
To the magistrate. I don't know if the magistrate will fine him, but that's where it goes.
Okay. And if we manage to get that cleaned up, we need to stay on it so it doesn't get... I don't know if you guys have taken a ride down there lately?
Where?
Down around Legion Keener, Broadtown Lane.
Okay.
Have you been down there?
Playing about?
Yeah. Have you been down, take a ride?
What, the last seven, few years we've been down there?
I know, but it seems like it gets cleaned up, and then it gets a mess again, and it is an absolute disaster. And it doesn't get like that overnight, so if we manage to get it cleaned up and, you know, whatever we gotta do... I mean, I know if we go to the magistrate, maybe we can take some residents with us and some members of council and have the magistrate put some pressure on them, 'cause it's... We cannot let that go on.
Anne, if we clean it up, do you bill him?
Yeah, I have done that before.
Does it get paid, or is it a lien on the property, or what happens there? It does not get?
It doesn't get paid?
It gets lien, but it doesn't get paid.
Until the property's sold.
How much do we have lien against it, do you know?
Right now, I'm filing liens, and he has seven going on him. That's not on anything, do you know?
And what's that total?
Oh, I don't know.
Off the top of your head?
I can't...
Hundred, thousand?
They're different properties.
Probably thousand.
Oh, yeah, I'd exceed a thousand.
Do you do anything else with that? So, do you know that?
Not until the property's sold.
Part of the problem is, yeah, we could do something more. We could execute against a property. But in order to do that, we have to put up, now, this was several years ago, minimum fifteen hundred dollars every time we wanna execute against real estate. And that doesn't completely pay all the costs, so... You know, if we wanna go down that road, I would say go down that road with one of your bigger liens and something that's in six, seventy thousand dollar range.
Can't combine them all?
Beg your pardon?
You can't combine them all?
No. Each property is a lien. Each lien is against a specific property.
Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item on the agenda appears under the Administration and Finance Department, and it is our annual budget ordinance. It reads, "Adoption of the budget for fiscal year 2016 now therefore be enacted and ordained section one that the budget in final form is presented to this meeting with fiscal year ending December 31, 2016, showing a total receipts of $5,470,239 and total expenditures of $5,470,239B and is hereby approved as the fiscal year 2016 budget of the city of Latrobe. Section two, that any capital expenditure involving the cooperative purchase and or professional service must be presented to council for approval. Section three, the secretary of the city being hereby authorized to file certified copies of the budget with appropriate offices of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and any federal agency required by applicable statute or regulations. Section four, the within ordinance shall take effect upon the date of the publication of proposed enactment notice of passage enacted and ordained this council, the motion would be to enact the ordinance as read by the solicitor."
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance as read by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
Just one comment. It is a balanced budget without a tax increase.
You just can't say that enough, can we, Mike?
We have to blow our ordinance much as we can.
We can say that in your last, in your last year, you didn't raise taxes, right? Roll call, Ms. Buck?
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, under the Administration and Finance Department, is something that we've been doing every year, probably for the last fifteen, twenty years. It is an ordinance entitled, "Authorizing a Line of Credit from Commercial Bank and Trust of Pennsylvania," and an amount not to exceed $200,000, establishing a maturity date for the revolving line of credit note of December 31, 2016, authorizing officers to draw down on the line of credit and sign and issue the note and to make payments as required by the revolving line of credit note. I'm going to just simply outline the ordinance. The amount of the line of credit is $200,000. The interest rate, should we draw from that line of credit, would be at the rate of 60% of prime as published by the Wall Street Journal. This would be designated as a qualified tax-exempt obligation under the Internal Revenue Code. And I can say that while we have enacted this ordinance, we have never had to use the line of credit. It's simply a safety net that is there for us. The motion would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Did you get which one? Do you wanna number? Second. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck? This is ordinance 2015-13. Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution. It's something that we do generally every year. It's entitled, "Authorizing the disposition of public records set forth on attached schedules for disposition of the records of the Office/Department of the City of Latrobe." And I'll just briefly highlight it. It indicates that by resolution 20135, we adopted the Public Municipal Records Manual approved July 16, 1993. And in pursuant to that manual, we now enact this ordinance, now therefore a resolution, rather, now therefore be resolved. Section one, the council of City of Latrobe, in accordance with the above cited Municipal Records Manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of the public municipal records set forth on Schedule A. Attached here, too, section two, that the city manager, secretary, and any other proper officer being are hereby authorized and directed to carry out the disposition of the public municipal records set forth on Schedule A. Section three, the within resolution shall become effective immediately. Section four, that any and all other resolutions inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed, and attached will be records for the years 2007 and 2008 they are shown on Schedule A. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-45. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
The next item under Administration and Finance Department is a simple motion, and it reads, "I move we authorize the city manager in conjunction with the Park and Recreation Commission to send a letter to the Department of DCNR," I'll just say DCNR, "to switch the park, or the park designated for the grant from the old athletic field, fifth ward playground to the third ward playground." And this is in conjunction with the sale of the property to the school district. We are now moving to shift that grant from one playground to another. It's a simple motion.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Just any questions or discussions? I can't remember if we talked about this at the agenda front, did we? I knew we talked about it somewhere. I wasn't sure if it was at the Park and Recreation meeting or here. Okay, so everybody knows what's going on. So the public knows what's going on. We had a grant for athletic field, and we were, and Park and Recreation was in the process of applying for a grant for third ward. So with the sale of the athletic field to the school district, we were asking DCNR if we can transfer that grant money to the third ward park, and then we won't apply for the grant for the third ward park. And my understanding is that that shouldn't be a problem. This is a simple motion, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item under, again, under the Administration and Finance Department is a resolution, and it is entitled, "Authorizing and Approving an Amendment Cooperation Agreement between the City of Latrobe and the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program." It would probably be easier for me to summarize this resolution. In effect, the Latrobe Community Revitalization Program is seeking a grant of $50,000 for facade improvements. This is a project we've been doing for many, many years. This particular year, the... I'm trying to think of the state, the DCED. I was trying, I was confused between DCED and DCNR. But anyhow, DCED is requiring that we make ourselves liable for any payment under that grant program. And in effect, it's something new, something that they're doing this year. So what we are doing is really amending the initial cooperation agreements indicate that we would be liable for any expenditure of the funds that might be being made from that $50,000. Now, the good news is that that money is not spent unless the property owner provides the match to the LCP or RP. So it really doesn't affect our liability at all, but we're changing the agreement to indicate that we would be ultimately liable for the distribution of those funds. Mr. Trungos here, is there any questions? And it would be a motion to adopt the resolution, which does what I indicated.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
There is, or there is no liability for the city to this $50,000?
There is on paper, there is not in reality, because in reality...
How does that work in court?
The way it works is we'll never get to that point of having to spend... In other words, what DCNR is saying is we are liable for the local match, okay? So let's say it's a maximum $5,000 grant for facade. That money, either the $50,000, never goes to an applicant until the applicant has put his funds or her funds up. So if they don't put the funds up, then the whole deal is off.
So the applicant is the match.
DCNR is saying, "We will be ultimately liable for the match."
The applicant is the match, and if they don't apply, we're not buying the facade improvements anyhow, is what you're saying.
I believe what Jared had said, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we require the applicant to put the $5,000 or whatever the match is into an escrow before.
Yeah, we sort of made this so foolproof, like, years ago. What they do is they open escrow, so before we even entertain their application, they give us, say, $2,500 to show they're serious. And then we mobilize our design team, and then they pay for their entire facade. So that might be up to $20,000. Then, after every, every check is cleared, we examine that, and then the architects and the contractors go in and do a final exam. So after everything is paid for, then we release their escrow back to them, and then that matching money. The language is, you know, it's kind of absurd, because it's, like, at least for our purposes.
But every municipality may not do it that way.
Yeah. We make it so it's impossible.
They've gotta spend all their money before we give them the match.
Correct.
And the match is a $5,000 max per facade.
Yeah, so if they go away or they move, we never put up the money anyway, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
The motion would be to adopt the resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution. Okay. May I have a motion, please? We did that. I'm sorry.
Roll call, Ms. Buck, Ms. Beazey and Mr. Bald Mary.
Sorry.
This is resolution 2015-46. Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we're now going to move to the police department. The first item is a resolution. It's something, again, we do every year. It's approving Hoffman's boarding candles contract, whereas the city and Hoffman's have an effective contract for service of dog control and dog law enforcement officer, whereas the city desires to renew the contract, continuing that service. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the contract between the city and Hoffman's boarding candles for a one-year period, beginning January 1, 2016, ending December 31, 2016, in the form submitted and attached as Exhibit A, and providing for payments of $265 per month, being the same as hereby approved in section two. The mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other city officer, proper city officer being are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the contract approved hereby. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions? Ms. Buck?
I'm sorry, Mike.
What's the change from last year to this year, in the amount?
Five dollars.
Five dollars a month?
Yeah, five dollars per call, per month, the whole process.
Thank you.
Any else? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-47. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is also a resolution. I'll read it. It's amended police policy manual reckoning period, now therefore be resolved. Section one, the police policy manual, general order 1.8, section eight, reckoning subsection B, currently reads that all reckoning periods are for a period of one year unless otherwise noted. Section two, police policy manual, general order 1.8, subsection eight, reckoning subsection B, being is hereby amended to read, "All reckoning periods are for a period of five years unless otherwise noted." Section three, that the mayor, city managers, secretary, or their designate being are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution, such and forth that any other provisions as set forth in the police policy manual, which are inconsistent herewith, are hereby repealed further. Any and all other provisions of the police policy manual not inconsistent herewith shall remain in full force and effect. The within resolution shall become effective immediately, resolved in council, this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as read by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
Ms. Buck? This is resolution 2015-48. Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
The last item under the police department is a resolution. It is entitled, "Authorizing free public parking during the December holiday season." Now therefore be resolved. The council of City of Latrobe hereby authorizes and approves free on-street public parking from 12:00 noon until 5:00 p.m. each day, commencing on Tuesday, December 15, 2015, through and including 5:00 p.m. on December 31, 2015. Section two, that the mayor, city managers, and secretary of the City of Latrobe, or their designate, are each hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion?
That's just on-street parking?
On-street only. The city doesn't have jurisdictions over the lots, so it's on-street parking only.
Okay, we gotta get that, make sure the public knows that.
Anyone else? I just wanna say, I wanna thank incoming council member Eric Bartowski and his wife for this suggestion, because they, they sent me a Facebook message, and I guess your wife saw it somewhere and suggested it, and we thought it was a really good idea as a way to encourage people to patronize our downtown businesses. We've got a lot of great little shops downtown, and it's a great opportunity for you to visit them and not have to pay for parking, so encourage everyone to do that. Anyone else? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2015-49. Mr. Jimon Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Bald Mary?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Grater?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
That completes the agenda items. At this time, is there any unfinished business that anyone wants to talk about?
We have an update on our cap process.
Yeah, we actually speak to it during the report, but that's fine. We, the gentleman who's doing the audit came up with a number issue that we're going to include in the letter as an adjustment, more effective money we're getting. But it is an adjustment. We're gonna remove another cost from the overall total cap cost. We're still gonna have enough with the $1 million return. It's just the fact that we have to make another adjustment.
It has to do with prevailing wage. It's a very small number, but apparently the contractors do pay the full prevailing wage. It's like a hundred bucks total or something like that.
The thing is...
It's ridiculous.
The sad part is, you know, this audit has been going on for two years. And why, when we would've thought that out a year, two years ago, we could've corrected that. But now, at this point, it's too late. So we're adjusting the letter to reflect that, and we'll still be, and we'll still have a kind of one-way balance.
And we're hoping that this, you know, that we aren't gonna continue to get nitpicked out. I mean, we keep... I mean, we keep, nit won't die with this consultant, because if that's the case, then we're going to have to go higher.
Well, we were talking about it in the letter, and I think I'll wait, but I was going to, I was debating the fact that it hasn't been under law for two years. This prevailing wage issue should have been found two years ago.
Thank you.
Anything else for unfinished business? Any new business items on anyone's mind from council? Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to alert council. At the work session, the agenda session, I will give you a list of dates for the meetings for the next year. There are three days that fall on a holiday, or at least it's a holiday for city employees. Memorial Day, so we usually do that one on Tuesday. October the 10th, which I think is Columbus Day, and the last one will be the 26th, I think will be a holiday given that Christmas will fall on the weekend. So think about what you want to do in terms of the agenda, or whatever meeting they come up.
Just do on Tuesdays if you want, yeah.
Fine. If they won't be advertised until after the agenda sessions, well...
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Open forum for citizens' requests. Anyone have anything on their mind they'd like to discuss?
Good evening. My name is Susan Letterd, and I'm the president of Latrobe Neighborhood Watch. But regretfully this evening, some of you may know or some of you may not know, but Latrobe Neighborhood Watch ceases to exist. We've had to basically disband after great discussion with committee members. There was just lack of people attending the meetings. I think sometimes we'd have 13 people, 10. We'd have phenomenal guest speakers. People were just not attending. So after speaking several times to Beth, she told me that she thinks a lot of people probably just report something that they see to 911 on their own, and that may be the case, and maybe the city's too big. If you don't have enough people coming to those meetings, then you can't organize enough to have a block cap in current law or per section. So that maybe is what the case may be because of social media. That plays a role in it, I don't know. But this is the second time Latrobe's attempted in the Neighborhood Watch, and it just, it's not going to happen. I mean, people weren't coming, we didn't have the participation. But I want to thank the people that helped us. Chief Boomer helped us get it up and running. Jim Miller, Paul Volkman, and Jerry and Terry Baldmarry, and the few faithful people that came. But we're sorry that it just wasn't ceased to exist.
Well, thank you, Susan and Mr. Miller, for your efforts. I know, I know we're all disappointed that we didn't get more employee, or community participation, but you guys, it wasn't for lack of trying, so thank you for that.
Yeah, it was over a year that we did that.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, your fault.
Jay Miller, Vice President of Latrobe Neighborhood Watch. I'd like to thank a couple other people that helped us considerably. Poor Susan, our president, was great. We had some faithful members of the Neighborhood Watch. I'd like to thank Dawn from the Parks and Rec. She always, every time I would call her, she always made sure that the door was open for us in the evening so we didn't have to worry about showing up and the doors not being open. Barbara Buck, I wanted to thank her for the items that she posted on the signings outside. That was great. Paul Volkman, of course, he was our secretary and was in charge of public relations. He sent out the news articles to the newspapers and that there, to the radio stations. He also helped with the speakers making up flyers. We distributed flyers all over the city, even into Unity Township, put them into different businesses. We'd like to thank the businesses for posting those signs. Like Sue said, though, that didn't even work. Mr. Retrakka's office was very helpful in getting us the materials, the handouts that we needed, and they did a great job also. Was always air force. We had, in our treasury, we had about a little over $600 left over in the treasury, and we made donations to two worthy, very worthy organizations in the City of Latrobe. One was the Latrobe Volunteer Fire Department. We split it in half. And the other one was the Greater Latrobe Parks and Recreation for all their volunteer working in there. So we'd like to thank them for all the volunteers. You know, it's easy when you get paid to if you show up, but those folks don't get paid, and they're there all for us all the time, so I'd like to thank everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else?
Jim Bolton, 225 Irving Avenue. I have a quick question. I see it every year, maybe it's to Mr. Kelly or to Mr. Jones. You have to sign papers with bank oddsuit for a line of credit. What's the cost factor that for the city here? Don't we have enough money in the surplus to carry us?
There is no cost, Mr. Bolton. It's a line of credit that we just, we open up just in case there's an emergency. There's no cost.
That's a little explanation, you know, no cost unless you use it.
Correct, and we've never used it forever, have we, Jim? That you know, since you've been here?
I think we've been doing it since the 90s, the late 90s or so. Now we haven't used it.
As long as we don't use it, there's no cost.
Like I say, I was just curious about that.
It's a good question. Thank you, Mr. Bolton. Anyone else? Jared?
Oh, I just want to say thanks to everybody who ran on council and is retiring, I guess you call it. It's not an easy vote. Thank you, and thanks for voting. The facade money, we do need a state budget, which may never happen. They can learn something from you all, that was an easy vote there. But thank you for your service, seriously. Take a lot of people yelling at you and everything else, so thanks.
Thanks, Jared. Wayne?
Well, Mike Snowman, he's under this question, so nothing else?
You got nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, well, since this is the official last meeting of the year, I want to take this opportunity to thank our outgoing council members. Our deputy mayor, Mike Schapora, who is finishing his second term and has chose not to run again. So thank you for your eight years of dedicated service, and for me in the last two, you've been a superb deputy mayor because you always, we've covered well for each other with our travel, business travel and things like that, and always had, always available. I'm still going to pick your brain because I still have your cell phone number and your email address, so I want to thank Mike. Fabian, you know, I don't know how many years you've been on council, but it's been a long time, so my guess is we'll see you again sometime. But thank you very much for all of your service and your dedication to Latrobe. I know you love this town, and that's why you do this. And Madeline, thank you for stepping in and filling up my spot for the last two years. It's been wonderful having your knowledge and experience on this council with your many years of service to the city. It's been truly an asset. And if you guys have any party words, you know, now's the time. The microphone is yours. Anyone have anything they want to say?
I just want to thank the people on council that I've worked with, and the city workers or managers, solicitor, and all the department heads we work with, because it's been a pleasure to work with them. It's been a pleasure to do what we do here on, what I do on council, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to be able to serve for two terms, and I wish the best for the future because we want the City of Latrobe to strive.
Madeline, have you heard that? Fabian? Well, I'd like to give them all around the floor. And with that, we're going to have a brief executive session, and then I'm just going to come back to adjourn, so we'll see you all. Well, everyone have a Merry Christmas and be safe, and we'll see you, if not at the agenda meeting, we'll see you next year at the reorganization meeting. I'd like to ask the incoming council members to join us in the green room as well as the chief, Bart, Jim, for a few minutes. It won't be long.